Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the special meeting of the Yountville Town Council for Tuesday, September 17th, 2019. Go ahead and call the meet, the special meeting to order and ask for roll call, please.
Councilmember Durham Becker?
Here.
Councilmember Durham?
Here.
Councilmember Mueller?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dorman?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. We will be holding our Pledge of Allegiance when we have our regular meetings, so we'll move right ahead to adoption of this special meeting agenda. Is there a motion?
Second.
Thank you. Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
If that passes. So we'll get straight to introduction, and I do want to just mention, and if it sounds like I'm telling our presenters this for a reason, it's because I am, the Vice Mayor does need to leave our meeting by about 5:00 because she has the Napa Unified School District 711 Committee meeting to get to, so the more we can get to before 5:00, the better for her inclusion. So I say that, and we'll start with introduction.
All right. Good evening, Council and ZDRB. Tonight, we kick off the effort to comprehensively update the town's zoning ordinance and design ordinance, and this update follows adoption of the general plan earlier this year. And since this general plan and the town zoning and design ordinances must be consistent with one another, the new general plan land use policies require that the town amend its zoning and design ordinance within a reasonable amount of time. And so this ZODO update that we will embark on for the next year or so will include items that are triggered by the general plan update, and this includes things like changing the zoning designation on properties, or creating new and revised development standards for different districts, but it also includes items that are not mandated by the general plan update, things like parking, and noise, and lighting. All of these are items that we've heard are of interest to the community. They haven't been comprehensively updated in quite a long time, and so we'll be exploring them in more detail. And since there's more discretion with these potential changes, there may be more minor or more sweeping changes to the ordinances. It'll all depend on the feedback we get from you somewhere along the line of this process. But the focus of tonight's meeting is findings, and it's an example of one of the subject areas that's not required by the general plan update, rather, it's an area of the town's code that we've been wanting to change for some time, and so we're using it as the starting point tonight. And it's great for this joint meeting because both bodies make findings on the decisions that they make, and it's really an opportunity to simplify the findings and make sure that they address the issues of importance to this community, so it's a great time to really clean them up. So we've presented to you in the staff report a white paper that includes an introduction on the purpose of findings. It analyzes the current findings in the Yountville Municipal Code. It provides examples of findings from other jurisdictions here in the Napa Valley and those with similar characteristics to Yountville, and it provides a set of draft findings. And these draft findings are a starting point tonight. They're intended to spark discussion. We're looking for detailed feedback and direction from you on such things as whether there's a need for district-specific findings, or whether to include findings about preferred commercial uses. We'd rather get that level of feedback than wordsmithing, and the reason is we'll take your feedback from tonight and revise the findings, return to you later this fall for final review and adoption, so you do get another chance to look at these. But before we jump into this work effort, I want to introduce the team, and you know Christine O'Rourke. She's worked with us before on the Climate Action Plan and the General Plan, and she's helping us with this effort. Bob Brown is new to the team, and Bob has 40 years of experience in planning and development, most significantly of which he's been a community development director for most of that time, and he's somewhat of an expert in writing ordinances, so it's nice to have him on board. We also have Rick Williams as part of the team. He's not here tonight, but he's an architect that's going to help us revise the development standards, and you'll see him all at our next meeting. So I would like to now turn it over to Christine O'Rourke to just share real briefly what this process is over the next year.
And Christine, before you get started, I want to just acknowledge all of our ZDRB members that are here with us to have this conversation. It's also nice that we have a full contingent of the zoning and design review board. Welcome, Mike, to join, and so we very much look forward to hearing all of your feedback and appreciate all that you do when you have your meetings, but we really want to have this to be an interactive exchange of thoughts about some of the information you're about to hear. So I'm glad we're all here today, and Christine.
Okay, great. Hello. Hello, members of the Council and the ZDRB. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. So I'm going to just quickly kind of set up what the agenda is, and then I want to talk about kind of the overall project and the process that we're going to be going through in the schedule. So we'll start off with our staff presentation, and I will, as I said, do the process and schedule. Then Bob Brown is going to be going, I mean, I'm sorry, Gary Bell will be going over the findings and the quasi judicial decisions, and then Bob Brown will be talking about the modifications and recommendations for modification to the findings. We'll have council questions and public comment, and then finally, what we're looking for is council direction on these changes to the permit findings, so that we can then wrap that into our zoning code update. So, next slide, please. So as Sandra said, the overall project is to implement many of the general plan policies and programs. So what we're going, what we're looking at at the end of this project is we're going to have a complete revision of both Title 17, which is the zoning ordinance, Title 17 of the municipal code, as well as Title 18 of the municipal code, which is the design ordinance. So the way, this is, there's a lot to cover here, so the way we've decided that the best way to kind of approach this is to break it up into smaller little pieces, and we're going to be using white papers in order to deliver that information to you. So these are the white paper topic areas that we've identified. The first one is what we're doing tonight is on permit findings. And then we have a series of white papers, and we'll be bringing forward to you some different design concepts to look at as well for the sites. These are sites that were identified in the general plan, either as change areas, or they're sites that are ripe for development. So we'll be looking at west of Washington sites, Humboldt, North Washington, the French Laundry Garden site, and the Catholic Church mixed residential site. In addition to that, there are other ordinances in the code that we are going to be updating, and again, these were, you know, this is a direction that is coming out of the general plan, so we'll be preparing white papers on home occupations, pop-up retail, outdoor lighting, signs, good neighbor practices, noise, parking, and design guidelines. So all of these white papers are going to, essentially, we'll discuss what the existing ordinances are, existing conditions are, then we'll be looking at what, identifying challenges, problems, issues that are coming up, and then we'll probably be looking at what other communities are doing, either in Napa County or in the Bay Area, similar counties that are dealing with the same kind of issues, and then we might be making some kind of recommendations, but mostly we'll be looking for your feedback from both the ZDRB and the Council. So we'll be asking you policy options, and then we'll be taking that feedback and updating the code with that feedback. So we've got kind of two different tracks. So for the sites, we're actually going to, this is going to be a little bit more of a longer process, and we're going to be doubling up many of these, just to try to make it as efficient as possible, so we can get through all of the information, everything we need to do in a year. So for like the first one, which the next time we meet together, when we come to the ZDRB meeting, we'll be talking about west of Washington and the Humboldt site, so we'll be pairing those. And then we'll be doing North Washington and the French Laundry Garden site, and then the Catholic Church mixed residential site. Each one of those, when we come forward, the first meeting, first what we'll be doing is we'll be going to the ad hoc committee, which is Mayor Dunbar and Vice Mayor Dorman, and talking about, you know, just general issues and options with them. And then we'll be bringing the white paper to the ZDR, or the design options to the ZDRB, and then the town council. So we're just exploring different design options at this point. Then we would go back to the ZDRB and to the town council with refined design options. And then finally, at one point in the future, we'll be adopting the code, so that will be more memorializing new design standards, new design guidelines, et cetera. Okay, next slide. And then for the other white papers that we have here, we're going to be doing a little bit more abbreviated, so we'll be first meeting with the ad hoc committee, and then we'll be bringing our white paper to the ZDRB and then the town council. So here, we're exploring policy options. We'll get your direction, and then we'll be packaging that all up for adoption with the revisions to the municipal code. So what we, as far as doing all of those adoptions, rather than doing each one every month, we're going to be doing it in three phases. So the first one, we'll be doing the findings and the first revision to the zoning map, and so we'll be having that adopted by November of 2019. The second phase, we'll be compiling all of the feedback that we've gotten on the individual sites, as well as the ideas on home occupations and pop-up retail ordinances, so we'll bundle that all together for adoption in May, and then the final phase will be all of the rest of the, of the white papers, and those will all be, that code will be adopted August 20th, and that will also be all of the design guidelines, and the complete code will be adopted by August 20th of next year. So, that is the schedule. Should I break for questions now, or do we?
Yeah, I have a question about the schedule, so let's at least break for that.
Okay.
Why is this going to take till August of 2020 to get through all this, is my general question. I know from the ad hoc meeting we just had, just even finding our ability to meet is going to be part of the timing, but we have a general plan that we've adopted, and it doesn't sound like we should have to wait a whole nother year to actually have the contents of the general plan adopted.
Yeah.
And how are we prioritizing? You have three different adoption deadlines or dates here. Could you explain your rationale for which one, the findings in November, and then the other two?
Sure.
Like, can't we get to this faster?
Get to it faster. You know, it's, in order to have, to do the processes, I outlined it, and even with, you know, we wanted to double them up because we wanted to try to get through as much as possible. We didn't want to monopolize the council's agenda for each, each, each meeting. So we're bringing something every month to the ZDRB and to the council, and, and just in order to have enough of a process, so it can go back and forth, that's, I mean, we've tried to condense the schedule as much as possible, and that's kind of how long it's going to take. So for the first phase, we kind of came up with these phases with staff, so the phase, the first one, is to do the findings, because that's been identified as being really important to the town, to get the findings kind of cleaned up and, and adopted, and, and then the zoning map. There are some changes that, to rezone Domain and Shandong, and the, to kind of formalize the zoning or the rezoning of Hotel Yountville. So those were identified in the general plan, so those are kind of cleanup, at least the Hotel Yountville zoning is a cleanup. We also want to apply the gateway overlay, as well as a mobile home park overlay, which aren't identified on the map, so that's kind of cleanup, but we want to get that done first. And then the other ones, it's just, it seemed like, rather than bringing it to the council, you know, every month for adoption of something, that we would bring them together, and then also, if you do one, it might impact the others, so rather than just keep revising the whole code, that we're, we're trying to break at areas, at points where it seems like it makes sense, and it can be done as efficiently as possible. Does that answer your question?
It absolutely does, and it makes sense. I guess I just didn't realize the code was in such terrible shape. I mean, that's kind of what I'm hearing, which is, we need months of review of every detail, and maybe I'm looking at Sandra and Gary to say, there've got to be some of these sections in the code that are perfectly fine, or close to it, and so are there going to be ways where we can consolidate even more to just say, yeah, these eight chapters are really good? Because we've been, we've been updating code over and over for years now, so I'm just wondering.
Potentially, yes. The phase two, it represents all of the change areas, all the new land use designations and development standards that come directly out of the general plan, so those will allow development on those parcels where things have changed. Phase three looks more broadly to the zoning ordinance and gives us a chance to dig into the different ordinances. We may not touch them at all, but we're going to have the discussion about them to see how far we want to go. Things like noise might need to be amended slightly. Parking, we know we'll want to include new concepts in there. We're starting with a good base on that last third phase, but we're using it as an opportunity to make sure we don't pass over all those items and that we consider them in the final update. I suppose we might be able to shorten the timeline there toward the end if we decide these chapters don't need much work, if any at all.
You bring up parking, that's a perfect example of what I'm focusing on here, which is, we're already addressing it. We've already had multiple workshops about it. We already have phases of plan in place, so why is it still part of this plan and process? Again, do we have to still capture legal terminology in the code? I know we talked about there's a lot of duplication, you know, throughout the code, which seems like a very easy fix. Can I say that to Bob? And he is shaking his head, yes. In the 12 different places that there's one reference to something, we talked about in the ad hoc committee, so as we have been handling some of these issues, it seems like we have been kind of updating all this already.
Well, I would...
I was just going to say, Mayor, to your point, as we move through, and parking's an interesting discussion, but I want to remind everybody that we have our current parking standards. The general plan also encouraged us to look broader and perhaps entertain some out-of-the-box options. So in this case, how we word and phrase that and get that into policy would be one of those things. It also opens up the question of, is the current standard that we're applying appropriate? So I mean, yes, we're working on tangents, and one area may lead us to take a broader look while we're doing it, to address that conclusion, but I did want to let you know that there's different parts that we see that may need to be part of the August, what's identified as the August kind of cleanup.
But we're not talking about waiting until August 2020 to put parking tees on Jefferson Street in the one-way stretch.
There are two different discussions. So the discussion we're having now is how to improve right-of-way parking, on-street parking, and improve that situation in town where the town can help with that. This discussion will be more about parking standards, private development, and what's required for new uses, new buildings, et cetera. So they're all related to parking, but they're really two different topics.
So that's why, I just wanted to be clear to everyone that we are still moving forward with standards that have been modified, that are either already enacted or about to be enacted, so there is still process and progress happening, not over the next year, but more immediately. There are some, okay.
And I think also, Mayor, to that point, it's important to realize that we have put all of the major change area elements into phase two, and those are the ones that require a bit more of a community conversation, for example, the three-story height and those things. So we're hoping to have all of that ready to go for May. So that's your, you know, those are the biggest change areas, if you will, that have come out of the general plan, so the, and they need the most work to fine-tune the process and how do we get to what's what. And that's really, you're looking at, you know, you'll be into heavy discussion on those at the beginning of the year, so we're not talking too far out of line where those come. And then I do think, as we have a better sense of the direction and the level of community engagement on those other areas, we can take a better look at that point as to what the strategy and timeline would be, but it is comprehensive. I mean, one thing I will say is, yes, your, your design ordinance and implementation tools are horribly out of date, and part of that goes to the fact that we've attempted to cobble and work off of a 1992 document.
So are you, using your three-story height as an example, did we not adopt a general plan that said that was going to be allowed in certain areas, and you're saying that that can't be considered for six months?
I'm saying, yes, you adopted it in the general plan. What you have not adopted is the enabling provisions that determine how you go about conceivably granting it and the process by which to get it.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions at this point? Yes, Councilmember Mueller?
Is there a plan to kind of provide us with an e-copy of the municipal code, something that, you know, you referenced, that there are some sections that connect to other sections so that we can have that kind of as part of our discussion and our review, and?
Are you, are you, you're talking about an e-copy of the, the general plan, the two titles now?
I have that, but I have the municipal code.
The municipal code.
That we'll be working on.
So, so in the white papers, there will be, when it's appropriate, you know, the language that we'll be showing you about, about the revisions, the modifications that we're, we're recommending.
And with all of the cross-references when it's noted in more than one area?
Okay, I'm, I guess, would it be, it seems like it'd be nice, at least the way my mind thinks, to have this document, and as it gets updated, be able to kind of cross-reference the municipal code.
We'll be able to do that. The municipal code's available online now.
Yeah.
Right. But as you're updating and making changes, they're all going to be draft, because something we work on might change something else back.
Yes, we can do that.
But a working document that we can be looking at as we move through the process.
Yes, absolutely.
I think, to your point, Councilmember Mueller, you will see a couple things. One, you will see red-line versions where there's edits to existing references in the Unicode, and you may also see brand-new sections that are new, where something didn't exist before. So I think we can work with you on that.
And, and that's exactly what I'm looking at, but I'm looking at that in a document, that's a living document that gets updated. Will we have that to work with?
Yes, yes. Now that I understand what you're saying, yes, we can keep it, we'll keep a comprehensive Title 17, Title 18, and we'll keep track of all the changes that we're making as we go along.
And we can download it, you know, you can direct us to download it, or it can be downloaded on our agendas, or?
Yes, we'll find a way to make this possible moving forward.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, any ZDRB members have any question at this point? Okay, anyone else? No?
Well, then I'll hand it over to Gary.
All right. I think it's the first time I've addressed you guys from the podium. Eddie, are you controlling the slides?
I am.
You're controlling, okay. Well, great. Mayor and council, and members of the ZDRB, for those of you who don't know me, my name's Gary Bell, I'm the town attorney. Nice to meet you. You've probably seen the slides and the materials, but I'll go over an overview of what I hope to cover this afternoon, and hopefully leave you with more answers than questions, although if questions come up during this process, feel free to stop me, and I'm happy to jump in. I hope to cover what the law requires and why, to give you an understanding of why I sometimes stress findings or jump into the middle of a use permit hearing and ask for clarification on a particular topic. The legal test that a court will apply if and when one of these decisions is challenged, and by implication, how to make your decisions more defensible, because you'll understand what a court will ask when it goes and reviews that decision. And then finally, leave you with some thoughts and the opportunity to ask some questions as you start on the process of updating your findings. You know the next slide? All right, so what are findings? Start at the basics. On a very basic level, findings are written explanations for why you guys, the town council, ZDRB, or other bodies make a particular decision. A question was asked about, are there any other bodies of the town who make quasi judicial decisions? The only other one I can find is the Arts Commission. They do occasionally pass judgment on public art applications, and that would be a quasi judicial decision. Other than that, it's you guys here in this room that are making quasi judicial decisions under the zoning code and the design code, Title 17 and Title 18. All right, so why make findings? This isn't in the slide, but the short answer is, because the law requires you to. The longer answer is, there's some good reasons. The leading case in California is that case cited at the bottom there, it's a California Supreme Court case from 1974. They gave at least four reasons why making findings are a good idea, and then they said, and it's required. So the four things that make it a good idea, it facilitates the orderly analysis by the agency, that's you guys, requires you to go through a step-by-step process of, why are we making this decision? Do the facts support this or not? It enables a court to trace and examine the agency's analysis, and I think this actually gets to the heart of why findings are required. It's the second prong. So courts need something to review, and if the town just said yes or no, and didn't say why, a court wouldn't know what to do with that when someone came in and sued you guys and said, this was the wrong decision, you shouldn't have done it. Well, why? Well, we don't know, because you didn't provide any reason why you did it. So courts impose this requirement because they need to have some kind of standard to review when someone challenged a decision that you guys make. And so findings provide that basis. The findings are met, or they're not met, and there's evidence to support that decision, and a court can look at that and evaluate the evidence in light of the findings to decide whether or not it's supported by the findings, and we'll get to that a little bit later. It enables, yeah, go ahead.
So based on how you read the white paper?
And actually, hold on, just a second. We need a microphone on that table.
You can still mine.
We need Gary's mic.
The world is listening, so we need you to be amplified.
Live from Global Satellite TV. It was really just a clarification on the term findings, because as I went through the documentation, is it fair to say that findings are both a set of anticipatory guidelines in the abstract that then get applied to every decision? So findings usually is used in the past tense, like I've made findings, however, they're in advance documented as a set of almost criteria. Is it fair to say it's both?
Yes, they serve both purposes. That's exactly right. So on the one hand, they are a written list that lets the public know, here are all the things you have to do in order to get a use permit in this zone, or to get a home occupation permit, or to be granted a variance, or anything else, lets the world know what they need to do to comply with and get that entitlement. On the other hand, it explains to the applicant when they don't get it, this is why you didn't, because you didn't meet this finding, or it explains to the public, this is why we granted it. All of the findings were met, and here's the reasons why. So it does serve both purposes. That's absolutely right.
Yeah, one more.
Along that same line, it would make a lot more sense if we had design criteria, and then we make a finding. It's very confusing to have findings and then make findings from findings.
Yeah, so I don't know if...
Finding is very confusing.
Yeah, I don't know if you're pointing to a particular provision in Title 18 we might be able to go through. Do you know what she's referring to?
Just every time findings are used instead of the word criteria.
Well, I think...
That makes it very hard for laypeople to understand.
Well, and I think the consultants can probably address this, too, but findings and criteria is a distinction without a difference. If you wanted to call them criteria, I think you certainly could.
And I also just will interject that the good news about this discussion will lead to a wholesale change, and you may find, as we go through the discussion, a whole different opportunity about how we go about crafting, and what are design criteria, what are standards versus what are findings, and you'll probably find that staff is suggesting a very slightly different approach than what we have historically been doing.
All right, so thirdly, findings enable the parties to the agency, to the proceeding, to determine whether or not, on what basis, to seek review. So if, if the council of the ZDRB says, this finding is not met because of such and such in the, in the evidence, and that person says, that's not true, I know that's not true, or I don't believe that to be the case, they know, I'm going to challenge the decision because this finding was not, I don't believe to be accurate. And then finally, it serves a public relations function, this is sort of the public policy purpose behind findings, and helping to persuade the parties that administrative decision-making is careful, reasoned, and equitable. And these apply in quasi judicial proceedings because the ZDRB and the council is sitting in a judge-like role. And you think about when you go to court, a judge doesn't just say yes or no when you go in, thinks about it, sits down, writes a very long opinion, says, here are all my reasons and why, and applies all the facts to it. They're essentially opposing the same requirements on you when you're sitting in this special role, not a legislative role. We'll get to that distinction in a second. Next slide. All right, so the law requires findings. Federal and state due process clauses. Federal due process clause, you guys have all heard this, can't deprive a person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law. California Constitution has a counterpart. There's actually a statutory right in California to a fair hearing in quasi judicial proceedings, that's Code of Civil Procedure, 1094.5. We'll go into that more later. Town ordinances require findings, those are, to a certain extent, self-imposed by you. You do need to make findings to justify your decision, the number of those findings, how those findings read, the content of them, those are decisions that are up for you all. And then the California Administrative Procedures Act, I mention this because California has adopted a comprehensive law that applies to its own administrative agencies, state agencies that make these same decisions, quasi judicial legislative when they adopt regulations. Federal government has the same thing. The Administrative Procedures Act does not apply to the town. It could, but it doesn't. So the only thing that constrains the decisions at this level is the federal constitution and the state constitution. You're not bound by the Administrative Procedures Act. Sometimes that comes up, it doesn't apply to town proceedings. The only thing that applies is the constitutional requirement as a backdrop and the requirements that you guys impose on yourselves. All right, so this is just a further explanation. Federal due process clause, it's the 14th Amendment, for those keeping track, that applies to the states, life, liberty, and property interests within the Fifth and 14th Amendments. The state constitution, and this is common, contains a mirror provision that's almost the same, but uses slightly different words, and judges think those words mean a lot. So actually, the state constitutional provision provides a little different protection, but for the most part, they're interpreted and applied in the same way. All right, so 1094.5 creates a statutory right to a fair hearing for you all, an impartial body, neutral decision-makers. This is what... This is what we talk about being unbiased and neutral going into these hearings. In a quasi-judicial proceeding, applicants have a due process right to a neutral, unbiased decision-maker. And what that means is not pre-deciding or prejudging the decision before you sit and hear and make the decision. There's a lot of cases where this has been spelled out in the case law, and what that means and what it looks like, but it's such things as writing an op-ed in the newspaper that says, there's no way I'm ever going to improve a development that looks like this because all development is bad. And then a developer comes before the council, and lo and behold, that person votes against it. Well, that's not a neutral, unbiased decision-maker. So it can happen with comments that happen before the meeting, on the record, in private, positions you've had in the past. This is why going into these hearings, it's important to, you can have opinions, obviously you all do, before you come into a hearing, but to approach it without making those things public, and to allow all the applicants to have, to say, to make their case before you and to present the evidence before you make a final decision on the merits. And that is a statutory right, as I mentioned, in addition to a due process requirement. Sorry, not done with that one. We can go back.
Oh, sorry.
Two slides. So there are two types of ways that your decisions will be challenged, and there are two very different standards that are applied by courts when they're challenging a quasi-judicial decision. Courts most often apply what's called the substantial evidence test, and that's what applies when someone challenges a use permit, a variance, a home occupation permit, an appeal of a decision of the ZDRB to the council, or an appeal of a staff decision to the ZDRB and then to the council, as in the case of ADUs. That's more often what we're going to be dealing with, substantial evidence. The test there asks essentially three questions. Did the council have jurisdiction? You almost always do. The only time you wouldn't is if you were trying to revoke an ABC license or something that you didn't have authority to revoke. The second one is, did you give them a fair hearing? That goes to the unbiased, neutral decision-making question. And then the third one is whether or not you acted in accordance with law, and that the decision is supported by the findings. And now, law means state law, and it also means the municipal code. State law often imposes requirements on what the town can do and how you guys can do it, but you also impose your own requirements. So if, for example, you adopt an ordinance that says, every time we grant one of these, we're going to do these four things, and you only do three of them, you have not proceeded in accordance with law because the municipal code says you have to do all four of them, even though it's a self-imposed requirement. The municipal code has the same force and effect as a statute while you're here in the jurisdiction of the town. The second one that's way less frequent, especially here at the town level, much more often at the state level, is the independent judgment test. A court will look much more closely at the decision if it affects a fundamental vested right, and that essentially is going to apply here, if at all, when you're revoking a use permit or revoking some other entitlement that you've already granted. And the reason for that is, the applicant has a lot more sunk costs and economic interests and money spent, and an economic expectation to continue business. And so if you're revoking that livelihood and the ability to make money, a court is going to apply a much more stringent test to apply, and will look much more closely at the evidence that you used, the findings that you made, the connection you made between the evidence and the findings, and is not going to be as deferential. Substantial evidence does not mean, on the other standard, it doesn't mean the best evidence, it doesn't mean most of the evidence, it doesn't even mean an overwhelming amount of evidence. It just means that there is evidence in the record that a reasonable person could have used to support the decision. And under that standard, it's pretty deferential, as long as you guys go through and make all the findings supported by the evidence.
Gary, I've got a question.
Yep.
In a hypothetical, actually, I don't know if it's a hypothetical, I think we've dealt with similar scenarios to what I'm thinking. A business comes for a major modification, and we've talked about how that kind of opens up all of their use permit conditions, and hours of operation, number of special events, things like that, and we could potentially be reconsidering those conditions, how does that fit into the independent judgment?
So I don't think that would be subject to independent judgment for at least two reasons. First is, they are willingly applying for that amendment, nobody's forcing them to come in, and the rules in the municipal code that allow you to impose conditions when you're granting a use permit, it's very clear, it's out there, people are presumed to know that that process includes, if you grant the requested amendment, the ability to amend those conditions. So I think that's the primary reason why the independent judgment test wouldn't apply. But also, independent judgment applies when you are completely removing the ability to conduct the business, or completely removing their right to do what they're doing. So just changing the hours of operation, even though it might reduce profits, or it might change their business model in some way, it doesn't completely remove their ability to conduct the business, and for that reason, I think it would still be under substantial evidence.
Thank you.
Yeah. Next slide. All right, so this is just a list of your general findings for use permits. As you probably know, these are the ones that are always required, these are currently required and are in your white paper too, I believe, for some proposed amendments. These are what you currently have for all use permits regardless of where they're being granted. You also have zone-specific use permits, and you also have some specific findings even beyond that. So as you can see, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, counting right, at least eight, findings that are required just for any use permit here in the town, and then a series of other ones depending on the zone that you're in. Yeah. All right, municipal decisions.
How about your say, vice chair?
Thank you. 17.156.020, does that track any state language in addition to requirements that we may have imposed as a town, or is that all Yountville language?
It's all you guys.
Okay, so are there state requirements on top of that?
No. The use permit does require a public hearing and requires a notice, and there's some things that state law requires, but for findings, this is you guys.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, municipal decisions. There's three types, and I won't go into a lot of detail here, for those of you who remember your civics class. There's executive, Steve, your town manager is at the top of that, carries out and enforces current laws that you all pass. Next one is legislative, that's you guys. You create new rules for future acts. When you adopt a new ordinance, it cannot apply backwards, that's an ex post facto law, that's not allowed. You can apply it forward, meaning anyone from the date it takes effect onwards is subject to that, to the extent they're engaging in behavior that's prohibited or regulated by that ordinance. And then lastly is quasi-judicial, that's what we're talking about today. And the distinction here is a little bit hard to conceptualize, and it's oversimplified here, but for purposes of our discussion, a quasi-judicial decision applies existing rules to past facts. And the way to think about this is, when you receive an application for a use permit or a variance, or you're hearing an appeal from an ADU that was denied or granted, the law existed at the time that application was submitted, and it exists at the time you're making your decision. And the facts that you're applying to that law occurred or exist at the date you're making the decision, right? And then legislative is looking forward. So it's in quasi-judicial decisions that the due process standard is higher, and in legislative it's lower. So for due process generally, the base level is notice and an opportunity to be heard, those are the two things that it requires. In the legislative context, that's accomplished when you publish an agenda, when you allow public comment, that's the only due process that's required, people can come and speak, and they know about it. In the quasi-judicial context, we have to send them notice personally, give them more time to speak, present evidence, present written findings, advance the notice of the evidence the town is going to use, and that's because more process is required, because you're affecting more of their liberty and property than you are in a legislative action. Next slide. All right, and this is just a further explanation of what I just said. Ordinances, general and specific plans, zoning codes, personnel rules, and MOUs, those all apply in the future, don't apply to past facts, they're all legislative. Quasi-judicial, that's permits, variances, home occupation permits, nuisance abatement, personnel decisions. So under the MOUs, discipline can be appealed up to the council, those are quasi-judicial decisions as well, if and when they come there, and license and permit revocations, which we've already talked about, which don't happen very often, but they can happen. So findings are not required for legislative actions unless required by statute or the municipal code. Your municipal code does require findings for at least one legislative act, and that's the adoption of a development agreement. There's four or five findings that are required for that, and that's imposed by your municipal code. State law requires that you make certain findings for an urgency ordinance, that's an ordinance that takes effect immediately. Those findings must be necessary for the immediate preservation of public peace, health, or safety. But for the most part, you don't want to make findings with legislative actions. The reason for that is, when you say exactly why you're doing something, a court's going to hold you to it. If you just adopt a law, any conceivable legal basis for doing what you did will be upheld. All right, so findings are required for all quasi-judicial actions, even when your code does not require it. And so regardless of whether or not your ordinance commands it, you must render findings sufficient to enable the parties to determine whether or not, what basis, to seek review. If you don't make findings to justify the decision, that will violate 1094.5, your decision will be reversed, and it'll be sent back. I lost my slide changer.
When you say it'll be sent back for reconsideration, it doesn't just on its face invalidate the decision, well, it does invalidate, but it get another shot at the process.
That's right, exactly. Yeah, so if there's some procedural problem with what the town did, one thing a court can do is send it back to redo it, because it's not that what you did was illegal inherently or not allowed to be done, but there was something about the process that was unfair or violated due process, and you can come back and do it again. Because as you know, for any of these, well, if you're thinking about like a nuisance abatement action or a code enforcement action, those can be commenced at any given day because every day is a violation. And so the fact that you, the fact that the town may have acted incorrectly on one given day doesn't prohibit it from coming back and doing it again, and the courts will often send these back with a finding and a chance for the town council to redo the hearing. So substantial evidence, for the abuse of discretion—
Sorry, I have a question on the findings.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
So the, going back to the terminology, in terms of findings being required for all quasi-judicial actions, is this basically you, after having done the review and summarizing the finding on a quasi-judicial action, that's what this is, the requirement is there for? Is that correct?
Yes.
I don't know if this is a valid question, but is there any case where somebody might argue the nature of the finding criteria itself, meaning that we'll call it the upfront? So if you come up with a list of findings that rule against, you know, a particular decision, they might say, well, you are adhering to the, you know, the finding criteria that you put forward, but I don't think those are valid in the first place.
Yes. So one of the things the findings have to do is support the decision. So broadly speaking, your findings here that you're looking at in Title 17 and Title 18, they support the decision. What that's trying to get at is saying like, something that's totally disconnected from the project altogether. Like, I'm not going to approve this particular project in this place because I don't like the current administration, right? It just doesn't have any connection whatsoever. So your findings do need to support the decision, and part of this process in adopting the code and the findings is, the findings do relate to land use generally. So as long as the findings relate to land use, all of these are required for land use applications, that requirement's going to be met because there's a close enough tie there.
Was that really, excuse me, your question?
I mean—
Didn't seem like he answered.
It was, I guess, I was probably presenting a real edge case where somebody might argue that the nature of the findings as outlined in Titles 17, 18 themselves are prohibitive to the extent that any such conclusion was limited by how it was set out in these titles in the first place. I don't know if that's, it may have never happened, and I guess if we do everything properly, that won't be a case, but—
So if I understand your question, it's that the findings predetermine the outcome? Is that what you're saying? Nobody could be granted this—
They're challenging the validity of the finding itself.
The criteria.
But it's written incorrectly.
Yeah, and so what I'm saying is, the criteria themselves will be upheld if there is a connection between what they require and what you're approving. And so in this case, all of your findings in Titles 17 and Titles 18 involve things like compatibility with the neighborhood, consistency with the general plan, design standards, those all have a close nexus with land use, and so as long as you're not imposing a finding that has absolutely no relationship to what you're approving.
Yeah, Councilor Dornberger.
Yeah, so Gary, you're saying that the findings are already embedded in the ordinance, so that you, it's not that we make up the findings, the findings are already there, and you have to abide by what the ordinance says are the findings that should be done.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Yes. All right, so substantial evidence. This is a legal term of art. Like I said earlier, the ultimate test is whether a reasonable trier of fact can make the finding in question in light of the whole record. So you do need to consider the entire record before you, that includes not only the staff report and the staff presentation and all of the materials that are submitted to you, but also the oral presentation at the meeting and any other evidence that you gather that's relevant to the decision. You can do ex parte communications, and also site visits and research on your own, as long as that information is disclosed, the best practice is to disclose that during the hearing, because that goes to the fair hearing requirement in 1094.5. Substantial evidence is reasonable, credible, and solid, and you can see the courts kind of struggle with this too, substantial evidence is, and you can see all the different iterations of this. Reasonable, credible, and solid value, inferences may constitute substantial evidence, there you go. If they are reasonable and logical. Court will not reevaluate the agency's findings, so as long as you made them and there's evidence in the record to justify them, they're not going to, they're not going to second guess whether or not that was the finding they would have made. They're going to uphold the finding you made as long as it's supported by some evidence in the record. But it's more than just any evidence, just to confuse the issue any further, and speculation or conjecture alone is not substantial evidence. Does that answer the question, or just further confuse it? All right. For example, zoning, division into districts, different regulations of each district, that's really what we're talking about here. A zoning variance, a use permitted which differs from the exact terms of a zoning ordinance. And a variance is one of those rare things that does have findings required by state law. The town currently has all of those findings that state law requires, and a few other findings that you've imposed on top of that, which is perfectly fine. Next slide. But these are the findings required by state law. Special circumstances applicable to the property, including size, shape, topography, location, or surroundings, such that the property cannot enjoy privileges enjoyed by other properties in the same zone. And you can't grant special privileges inconsistent with limitations on their lots and similarly situated lots. And then there's a few others that the town imposes. But for example, a special circumstance can include that the property has very steep slopes and a heavy forest and a canyon, and therefore it limits where the building can be built on that site, and therefore you can have a variance from things like setbacks or building height, or other requirements that might apply to other properties. Decision to grant the variance, there is substantial evidence to support a variance to allow the house within 50 feet of the access easement because it's on such a steep slope, and that's a unique feature of that parcel, that it's not shared by the other parcels in the area. And here's all of your findings for variances, the bold is what state law requires, I believe. ZDRB shall hear the application, a variance shall be granted if the facts presented establish the filing. So instead of unique, you guys say exceptional or extraordinary circumstances. All right, next slide. All right, so I want to spend a little bit of time on SB 35. This was, does change the findings that you can make for a very discrete category of projects. This was passed in 2017 as part of the legislature's housing bill package, there were 11 or 12 bills that year, took effect in January 1, 2018. This didn't turn out to be quite the sea change that some had thought it might be, but it does affect a certain class of projects, as I mentioned. It affects multi-unit residential, meaning two or more proposed units. The projects have to be 50% of the units affordable to at least, to people making 80% or less of the median income. Has to be in an urban infill area, meaning it's surrounded by 75% of the perimeter. Has to be in an urban infill area, meaning it's surrounded by 75% of the perimeter has already been developed. It has to be designated for residential uses, including two-thirds of the square footage for residential use in a mixed-use zone. Can't be in a very high fire hazard severe area, flood zone, community conservation plan. Cannot demolish any current residential units to put these in that have been occupied in the last 10 years. Can't be in a historic building. If there are more than 10 units, must comply with prevailing wages and skilled and trained workforce provisions, and it doesn't apply to mobile home sites. If it meets all of those requirements, the town can only apply quote unquote "objective" zoning and design standards. Objective meaning doesn't require you to apply any of your personal judgment in deciding whether or not the findings are made. So objective thing means things like, very clearly, things like setback and building height and things like that, which is, it's either five feet from the property line or it's not. But the distinction between objective and subjective is not always clear, and there isn't currently a case that spells it out in this context yet, although I expect there will be. But to give an example, in the context of small cell wireless facilities, which the town recently updated the ordinance and 5G is rolling out throughout the state right now, courts have found that aesthetic requirements can be objective. And that's something you would think would be subjective, but in some contexts, they're not necessarily. So there's a very conservative approach that only applies things like setbacks and building height. There's probably somewhere in the middle there that allows a, a little bit more control. But even if a project is subject to these requirements, or I should say, if it is subject to these requirements, you can't require a use permit anyway. So this isn't going to come to the town council even to apply objective criteria. The applicant has to apply for these upfront and put on the application, we are subject to SB 35, here's why. So this will be dealt with at the staff level. If a, an application were to come in right now and it did meet these requirements, I imagine staff would go through and pick all the objective zoning and design standards and see if the applicant met all of those requirements. Any questions on SB 35? All right. All right. Use permits often require specific findings, depending on the zoning district and the project type. For example, single-family residential findings also include, in addition to that long list of eight at the beginning, the proposed use promotes health, safety, and welfare, consistent with the intent of the general plan, which by the way, all of your zoning decisions have to be, consistent with another cross-reference section, and it's not detrimental to the existing uses in the surrounding neighborhood. We found 64 other ordinances that require findings. I think you guys might find maybe a little bit less than that, but it's somewhere right around there. There's 64 different sections of your municipal code that require findings. Who makes them? Town council, either in the first instance or on appeal from the ZDRB. And also, the town council, when it reviews a ZDRB decision, it sits in what lawyers call de novo, but what just means that they review the decision independently on their own. They're not bound by what the ZDRB does. They are not bound by the same evidence that the ZDRB considered. So when it comes up on appeal, the council considers the same findings, the same requirements that the ZDRB considered, and has to make the same findings, yes or no, to approve or deny it, but can consider brand-new evidence and look at all the evidence fresh and make its own independent decision on appeal.
Gary, I have a question. You might have a who, what, when, where slide coming up, I don't know. But in terms of how, so we get a resolution, or if there's an ordinance and Sandra or whoever's writing it always puts the findings in there, and then nice italics below that is the answers to those findings. So if we do not acknowledge findings at all, but we vote yes, does that infer that we've approved all those findings without change?
If the resolution makes the findings and the vote is to adopt the resolution, then the council has made the findings.
Okay. So we do not have to call out anything specific, only if we've decided to not adopt? And then we have to make another specific set of findings, or can we just say we do not, I cannot make this finding, this finding, and this finding?
So if, if the decision is to deny the application for a use permit, for example, then that would be because one or more of the findings can't be made, and then that decision would need to be spelled out in a resolution or a minute order. Technically, you don't have to do a resolution, you could just read it into the record. But yes, there would need to be a reason why that finding wasn't met. Finding A requires this, we can't make that finding because something in the record doesn't allow us to do so, therefore the use permit application is denied. And that reason, the same requirements to justify the decision with findings in a reasoned decision apply to a denial just like it does to granting.
Okay, so one last question. So say we have the, the finding about noise, and a couple of us decide to argue about that, we both decide that, you know, we can't, it doesn't fit the noise standard, but we have different reasons for that. Is that still acceptable?
So the, the official reasons of the council will be whatever makes it in the resolution. And so ultimately, three out of five of you need to agree to move things forward, and so as long as the three out of five of you agree that the finding that's in that resolution is the one that's true and supported by the evidence in the record, and that's the one adopted by the council, that will become the finding of the council.
Okay, thanks.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So following Councilmember Mueller's hypothetical, we have a staff report, it has findings, and then it has the evidence, using that in quotes, that staff believes will come forward to support that. We hear, we read the staff report, we hear public comment, we hear from the applicant, we have less than vigorous discussion because we're all in agreement. We vote yes. Applicant takes it up on a substantial evidence to the court. Does the court look at exactly what we looked at then? And so it's not necess, I guess my bottom-line question is, is it necessary, advisable, or preferable for us as a council to say, I find this piece of evidence persuasive and this piece of evidence not, or I find this testimony this or that? Or can we just do as Councilmember Mueller suggested and vote?
Yep, you can do as Councilmember Mueller suggested and vote. The reason for that is, a court will assume that you have read and understood every single document in the record, and that your decision is based on the evidence that was in front of the council. So if it's in the agenda packet, it's in the materials, someone said it at the podium, you will be deemed to have understood and received that information. So the zoning and design review board also makes quasi judicial decisions and therefore makes findings, and then other bodies making quasi judicial decisions. As I mentioned, the only one I'm aware of is the Arts Commission. All right, the form of findings, which goes, this is towards the end of the presentation and goes into our next section a little bit. The content of findings is sometimes required by state law. That's the variances that we just talked about, or for an urgency ordinance, the findings we required, or by the town municipal code, such as what you adopt, and that's the process we're doing now. But their form is generally not required in any specific way, except for those specific state law requirements for variance. There's a basic formula for a finding that certainly that I recommend, it is the most defensible if a decision were ever challenged. Essentially, you restate the finding, and then you add the word because on the end of the finding, and you finish the sentence with whatever evidence in the record goes one way or the other for that finding. So if the finding is, it supports or it promotes the public health and welfare, you just restate it. This project supports the public health and welfare because, and then whatever's in the record that supports that decision. That is the best way to conceptualize how to make a finding. You are anchored to what the municipal code requires you to make, and you finish it with the evidence that was presented to you to make that decision. And because that evidence is in the record, it necessarily supports the finding that you just made. It shows your reasoned bridge between what the finding requires and the evidence in the record. So for example, it's consistent with the intent of the general plan because it enhances commercial development while retaining the distinctive character and details of architecture in the Old Town Historic District. You can even flush that out even further to include other evidence. All right, drafting findings. They must address all factors required by the statute and the ordinance. You have to make all the findings to grant it. You only have to miss one of them to deny it. Must do more than recite the statutory language. It's sometimes a trap to say, the finding says I have to do this, and then you just say, that is occurring. There needs to be a, a bridge between what the finding requires and what the facts and the evidence show. Findings should be in writing. That's the resolution the staff brings forward. Sometimes we'll request that we can bring it back at a future meeting so that we can spell out some of the specific findings that you've all made. They don't need to be precise or formal, but they do, and they also can be stated in the positive or the negative. And so that is a decision too, and when you're drafting these, do you want something to be not detrimental, or do you want something to be beneficial? Either one is allowed. You can do them in the negative or the positive. That's a decision up to you all. Good news is, your findings are presumed to be correct by a court, mostly because of a separation of powers. They don't want to meddle in the decisions of the town any more than they have to. And it's presumed that you held a fair hearing and did your job and made the findings that were required. It will be reviewed for substantial evidence and abuse of discretion, which is also the, well, those are actually mixed up there. For legislative decisions, the court generally does not review the agent's findings at all, which is true. And for findings affecting constitutional rights, the court will entirely disregard the agency's findings and appliance own de novo review, which is the independent judgment test that I talked about. And this just goes into more detail about what we all, what we already talked about. Substantial evidence, that's the standard. Abuse of discretion, that's another prong of the substantial evidence requirement. Finding doesn't have to be the only one. And final considerations, it's important to consider the purpose of the findings while you create them and draft them. Purposes include showing the public you've made a careful reasoned decision, notifying those how you made your decision, creating a clear record in case things don't go as planned, and dissuading potential litigation by showing reasoned decision-making. All right, any other questions?
Can you, for Gary? Tell Mr. Mueller.
So typically, you're always at our council meetings, and if we have a little hiccup in our proceedings here, you would typically help us out, keep us out of trouble, and tell us to go back and make certain findings. But if some of our boards don't have legal counsel, is that, they're going, the onus is more on them to make sure that, or have staff, I suppose, lead them in making.
Yeah, so two thoughts.
Specifics because is after the finding if they don't want to.
Well, two thoughts on that. Today's a best practice for how the ZDRB can make findings and bridge the gap between evidence and what the municipal code requires. Don't be afraid, though, to postpone it to a future meeting and bring it back for a final decision. I know that there's sometimes reasons why staff would want to move something forward, and obviously that's dependent on the particular application in front of you. But if for whatever reason, you want these to be articulated better, or you would like a resolution to be refined, that is something that can be brought back. We sometimes do that at the council level. ZDRB can do the same thing. And decisions of the ZDRB are appealable to the council. So if someone is unhappy with a decision that's happened, it will come up on appeal to you all.
Okay.
If that answers the question.
Any other questions? Thanks, Gary.
Good afternoon. So it's wonderful meeting all of you, and I'm really looking forward to the work that we'll do together over the next year. So that was definitely one of the more succinct presentations about the legality of findings that I've heard. And now we're going to go from what you just learned there to really talk about what should Yountville's findings be. And hopefully you've had a chance to look over the white paper, and I think one thing that's probably was apparent to you when you looked over what other cities do, is that there's a very wide spectrum in terms of what cities have in terms of their findings. For example, we showed you Napa. Napa and frankly, many other larger cities will, I think, commonly have pretty generic, pretty minimal findings. That could be for a number of reasons. The decision-makers may feel it gives them more leeway. Maybe there are less staff resources to actually prepare the written findings, which can, you know, definitely take time. But then when you look at, at towns like St. Helena, Sausalito, Carmel, those are more fine-grained findings, much more detailed. And as the town attorney pointed out, there really are no, there's no direction from the state in terms of what your findings must contain other than variances. So it really leaves you with, leaves you with a lot of leeway. So it's important really to right-size the findings for Yountville. So I think some of the questions to ask yourselves in, in thinking these through is, do they reflect the level of detail of your review processes? And my sense is that, that Yountville really takes a lot of care and, and detail in terms of looking at your redevelopment opportunities. So I think that's certainly a factor here. Do the issues that are stated in your findings reflect the issues of importance to the community and to your decision-makers? So you're really responding to things that are important to town, that are important to your constituents. And lastly, again, do you have sufficient staff resources to prepare the detailed findings? And it seems to be that, me, that you do. So all that sort of has led Christine and myself, working with your staff, to think that we're probably going to tend more towards more detailed findings here in Yountville, and that's really sort of what you have currently. So let's take a look at, at each individual section. First, starting with, with use permit. The zoning code currently has a set of eight use permit findings. They're in Section 17.156.020. And I counted 88 additional findings. The town attorney fence 64, but there's a lot. And most of those are, are in the various zoning districts. And many of those are similar to those eight initial findings, but maybe slightly variance to that. And what it really ends up meaning is that staff has to repair a lot of, in some cases, fairly duplicative findings, and decision-makers have to, you know, wade through those. So I think we, we find an opportunity here to really sort of pare down. There are a number of findings in the use permit section that relate more to design, so we would suggest those be moved over to the design review findings, just for clarity's sake. So we've proposed two, seven edited use permit findings, and, and most of the language in those findings is from your current code. It really is just edited down quite a bit. So we think that, you know, those should really address the related issues and impacts. But a major question for you this evening is whether you think in beyond, beyond those, those base eight findings, if there should be additional specific findings for certain uses, certain areas of town, that you think warrant some additional specificity in terms of what you're looking for. Let's see, I think that that's it. Yes. So the next slide. So in the white paper, we've included a strikeout, underlined version of the proposed edits. This is the clean version of those recommended revised findings. I won't read these verbatim, but really what we're looking for from the ZDRB and the council is whether you think there's anything missing here, if there's anything you read as ambiguous, or if you think additional editing is warranted. So we can go over those. Should we do that now, or should we come back to these individually?
Well, one thing I wanted to add before we do that is, from our ad hoc meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, both Vice Mayor and I agreed that we felt like we wanted to avoid too much specificity because we wanted there to be the ability to actually evaluate and make decisions as either the ZDRB or the council on a particular item. And so you mentioned about detail. There is a concern that there'd be too much detail, that it would preclude consideration of a particular project or application.
And that is fine. Again, if you would like to have, again, fewer and more generic findings, that's certainly legally acceptable. These were based really sort of more on what you have currently in the code, which again, is fairly detailed in terms of, you know, looking at the, the amount of development, the intensity, the density, whether that site can really accommodate it. The second is, again, looking at detriment, potential detriment to the surrounding community. Next is looking at, at circulation patterns, parking, ingress egress, and on and on. So we, we address noise, waste, amounts of water, et cetera. So again, if, if the council and the ZDRB think that we should sort of pare these back and make them a little less specific in these various impact areas, we're happy to follow up and, and give you a different version.
I believe we're on page 17 of the electronic, is that correct, Sandra? Is that correct, Sandra? Draft number four, draft revised use permit findings with the red strikers, and you do have some pink text in here as well.
And we'll deal with the additional findings in just a second.
Can I make a comment for a second? On behalf of the ZDRB members, I would like to say two things, is that we did not get this package until nine o'clock this morning. And since ZDRB is generally not involved in use permits, I know I did not have time to review any of the things regarding use permits. I just stuck to the design.
So maybe we jump to that while we're all together, and...
So we don't have any say in any of this.
Yeah, you sit here and you're like, why are you wasting our time with these things?
Well, and that's not really what I'm saying.
I could say that.
You could say that.
I think that's reasonable, if we wanted to focus on what is much more specifically under the ZDRB purview. We can do that. Do you have a reason to do that or not do that, Sandra?
No, we can jump to the design review. The ZDRB doesn't specifically make use permit findings, but they have a lot of inspirations as to use permit, when they're looking at the layout of projects that they are going to come on. But they don't specifically make these findings, so we can do that.
I have no problem being a part of the observation, but I'm just saying, we probably didn't prepare for this section.
Yeah, that's very reasonable. We can do the, let's do the design, if we have more time left, we get into the use permits, because it still will be, I think, informative for the ZDRB, as Sandra said. Councilor Dore Becker, you had a comment?
Ah, yes. I, that previous slide, is that available? Can you send that to us? Because I don't see that actually delineated in the white paper.
Yes, these are slightly different, but yes, sure, we can give you the presentation.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
So Sandra, just so we're all on the right page, jumping ahead, what number are we?
Twenty-three.
Yep. Number six.
But we're on, okay. Okay. There is...
Twenty-three at the white paper, where we show the existing design review criteria and the proposed findings.
Okay. There's something on page 13 about design review, so...
Thirteen is where we have excerpted all the existing design review criteria.
Okay.
So we see all of them together.
Okay.
So is everybody on page 23?
Yeah.
Just one comment before. I did want to hear a little bit more about the discussion that you had in terms of specificity versus generality. I know you, I didn't know if you finished your thought in terms of how you wanted to approach it, because I think that would be helpful input as we review these.
Well, we didn't get into specifics. We basically just, as I recall, stated that we did not want to get too detailed. I just looked at, some of the language sounds general, which is fine, in my opinion. I believe the vice mayor agreed. She made the point, though, that we not, you were using examples, I think you said St. Helena and some other jurisdictions that have very extensive detail, but it then almost takes the decision-making out, because it's already written as a finding. We felt like some of the other examples that had fewer and more broadly stated, giving it a little bit of a softer context. If it says something about impacts of energy-water use, we weren't going to say how much energy, how much water, those types of things. I think that's, that's at least how I was considering, keeping it a little bit broad. I think Bob can maybe speak to how the language can be nuanced, so that we're still covering what we need to cover, but it gives the flexibility to the board or the council.
Well, for example, a lot of the use permit findings, before we jump into design review, relate to not being detrimental to the surroundings. And so we can talk about that generically, which we start off doing, but then we start breaking it down. But not detrimental means that you can handle the traffic, and there's no safety issues with ingress and egress. And the noise isn't a problem, and there's not a privacy impact. So, again, we don't have to list those individually. You know, it can be rolled up into a lack of detriment finding that's, you know, that's more generic. That's certainly possible.
And so as to those categories, though, we've tried to keep it broad. It's a broad overall category as related to, to traffic, or views, or architecture, and it gives sort of a guideline to come up with a finding. It doesn't dictate the elements that need to be found in it, but it establishes a framework of items that are important to this community. So we have taken ones that are more detailed, but they're still very broad categories, if that makes sense.
I think so. Councilmember Mueller.
I tend to agree. There was many of the, I know we're jumping back to ours and not doing the design, which may have, you may have a totally different opinion, but I thought the specificity made things more confusing to me. So I agree with the ad hoc. Keeping things general gives you different kind of interpretations that, you know, you can make. You know, especially, I think you just pointed out, says one of the new findings was, does not require excessive amount of water or generating excessive waste. Well, that's pretty subjective. And so I really, I didn't really find that that was helpful at all. And, I don't know, I guess being on the council for a long time, I, I think the findings have really, overall, what we've had, has really stood kind of the test of time and given us all enough flexibility to make them in various ways. And, I mean, if there's something in particular you would like to call out, once we let ZDRB do their design findings, something, you know, that we had a major omission or something, I'd be happy to talk about that. But I didn't really find the edits helpful, because they do, did get too specific, in my opinion.
So let's just jump toward the design.
Okay.
On page 23, and then we'll come back.
Okay. So your current design review findings, there are currently six call, design review criteria, not findings. And let me address the question that Board Member Cook brought up earlier, which is, you know, findings versus criteria. We would suggest that you use consistent language, so that the decision-making relate to findings. Criteria, in this case, you will have a lot of design review criteria. Those are your design guidelines. And so you will apply those, and then discuss them in your findings. But we view findings and criteria as, you know, should be separate in the code in terms of the terminology that's used. So we would suggest that these be recast as findings. Again, the edits that are proposed are really trying to create a little more obvious, you know, sequential structure in the way that you would review a design application. So starting out, looking at the site planning, in more broad terms, then getting down to issues of compatibility with the surroundings, then discussing, you know, architecture and those details, views, that sort of thing, and then getting down to details like landscaping. So, again, sort of a more methodical progression through the design review findings. Next slide, Sandra. Okay, and then one more? So, again, these are, this is the clean version of the proposed design review findings.
So would you, what are you asking of us right now?
Again, if you had had an opportunity to review these in advance, you know, sort of your general reaction to them, but we'll have to do that subsequently.
The proposed ones?
Yes.
My, if I can just go ahead, my general comment is that, as a layperson coming in with no planning background or legal background, and I think the ZDRB is usually made up of people of that type, and we move through a lot of people coming and going, that it's more beneficial to us, I find, to simplify them to, instead of one, like, A there that covers site and scaling and pedestrian and vehicular and circulation and relationship to open spaces and streetscape, I prefer, much prefer, the style that St. Helena does, where they have more short ones that are much easier to understand and to apply individually.
Okay.
To me, that makes it a lot easier to navigate. I don't know if any of board members agree, or what their thoughts are. And I don't think we have to have the same standards of simplicity necessarily, that you find more useful for use permits.
Well, there needs to be clarity, whether it's a short sentence or a paragraph, there needs to be clarity.
Right. And I find the St. Helena ones very clear, because each one is its own individual idea. And if you meet that, 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 and that, you pass it. Not one long sentence with six different things covered. It's easy to just say, yeah, because three of the four are covered, so, okay. And that's not the intention of the findings criteria. Anybody else have any thoughts?
I agree with you on that.
I think that that seems to get into the area of objectivity versus subjectivity a lot more, because you're checking boxes, rather than applying zoning and design standards of a specific proposed design to a general list of findings. To me, it makes more sense, it perhaps is a little bit more demanding on members of ZDRB, but it offers up a little bit more subjectivity as opposed to objectivity around very specific...
Which, which does?
The way that this has been proposed here on page 23.
Okay. Okay.
I mainly have a question. This is just from potentially my, my lack of immediate familiarity with the, the design standards in Title 18. And it's really a question of, you know, where do the, where does the specificity need to live? In other words, if we have design standards in Title 18 that are very specific, the findings, as far as I understand, are there to reflect those standards, right? So getting more specific could result in a duplication of findings and standards. But I will caveat that by saying I haven't reviewed the design standards and, or anything that exists in Title 18. So it's really more of that question of, of where does the, where does that, where's the, where's the bar set? So, for example, things like FAR, right? That's, that's a, that is a criteria that is set in the, I'm assuming, in the various standards, and the finding would be, well, you didn't meet the FAR ratio, right? So we obviously wouldn't list something as specific as FAR in the findings, because it's in the standard. So it's really what, where does, where's the line between what the finding needs to reflect versus adhering to the, the standards themselves? And I think without that as a reference right now, it's hard to draw that distinction.
So what you'll always find in probably any set of findings, for example, here in letter F, it talks about compliance with your regulations. So compliance with your general plan, and compliance with your zoning regulations, and in this case, it cites Title 18, which contains both your design review criteria, but also a number of regulations. So, again, it wraps in compliance with all those rules. So if there's anything that is not being complied with, that would be called out there.
Here's a similar example, Michael, to your question in finding A. I was going to use the example of 50% two-story on a, on a block. If it says here in a finding, the sighting and scale of buildings, then in the standards or criteria, whatever we're calling that, it's identifying no more than 50% of a block can be two stories. Is that the same kind of relationship we're talking about, about the finding and then the more detailed presentation of...
How the project meets your regulations, yes. So if, you know, the scale is, is based upon your FAR, et cetera, you know, again, FA, I would say FAR doesn't always solve all, all design and aesthetic issues. I mean, you may, it may fit the regulations, but it may not work for the town in other ways. The findings let you go sort of beyond the regulations in terms of more subjective areas, if you, if you wish to go there.
I guess that's just confusing for somebody coming in to know that the sighting and scale means taking into consideration the 50% rule. But I guess that is staff's job to make sure that is called out as not meeting it?
I think that would be correct, that it could be an individual council or board, or board member that does that on his or her own and identifies that connection, but it either needs to be validated by staff, or identified originally by staff to say, this is why we're saying it's a good or a bad project, and where is it violating something and cite to something, or, or why is it compliant inside the area of compliance?
I think that's a great point. And what you're really looking at is a different framework for presenting findings and trying to educate the end result. So staff is still going to have the responsibility of giving you the presentation, the overview, talking about what is compliant, where the issues are or aren't, and addressing those. For example, I'll use the first one, the proposed development or physical improvement is appropriate with its citing scale, pedestrian, vehicle, access, circulation. So if there, you know, the first thing would be, staff's reviewed this, blah, 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 here's some detail, it's either, here's, it looks good, or we have some concerns. And then you would focus on the concerns, and then you all would be the decision-maker that says, oh, mm, I don't know that I can make that finding. Does that make sense? So you're still, you may be isolating it to one or two, and when you make your conclusion, you're going to state that, but it's a broader category that you're looking at, rather than a checkbox of going, because I've heard some comments from some of the, well, more on the council, but every once in a while, it's like, this finding's not applicable to this particular project, and yet we're forcing ourselves to go down this checkbox approach, and nobody likes making a statement that they're okay with something that they don't feel is applicable. So that's a caution about putting too much detail in. But I think the question for us is, are these working chunks, for lack of a better academic term, do they work for us? Do they give you the flexibility while addressing that? And I do think it's a great comment Commissioner Cook and the mayor has talked about. Doesn't change staff's job in presenting how we're going to address you and how we help to draft the initial findings.
I'm going to maybe make a bold observation that I get to. I feel like we might be in an area that we're prematurely trying to analyze and rewrite these things. Not only because, in some cases, it's new information that has not maybe had time to fully absorb. I know that the vice mayor and I got all this presented to, or much of this presented to us in our ad hoc setting. You all didn't have that opportunity. And so I think, too, we have some fundamental questions of structure, not even the content about it. It's how should this be listed for everyone's clarity and understanding? So if the oversight board of the council isn't clear on it, you can imagine the applicant and the public are not going to be clear on it either. So I'm going to suggest that we, if there are specific questions or comments about the revised findings, you've, you've given one, which is, you're not sure you like the, the lengthy, multi, you know, compound sentence format, because it can get complicated as to, if I like some of it, but not all of it, do I have to say, yes, it's found, it's a finding or not? Those are very specific and very basic things. And then we also need to talk about the content itself. And so I think this is also the first time that they're hearing this feedback in a very fundamental way. So even though I was challenging how long it's going to take this process earlier, I'm now saying, but we have to be able to, in the interest of doing it well and still being efficient about it, we need to give everybody a chance to, to really be effective in, in the analysis. So I don't know what I mean by all that, other than, we're not going to solve all this tonight, I guarantee you that, because we're not going to have time to really get through... through all of this content.
Mayor, if I will, I think that's a good segue. We don't have to make decisions, but I think what's important is, and I really encourage you to look at the proposed finding segments all the way through, and then we can have another agenda item for the ZDRB. But right now, you currently have a process for all, both bodies, ZDRB and council. So what you need to be thinking about is, what's our current? What are we covering? And does the proposed help us, or, you know, take a step back and look at it a little abstract, if a new project comes in, how do we do this? Because, for example, I'll use the Commissioner Cook, you were saying, you have an issue on one of those in the grouping. Well, that one, because remember what the attorney told you, just one negative conclusion can result in you denying the application. So when you look at a grouping, if you can't find, for example, that it meets circulation, that's okay, doesn't matter that it met the others, because, and if you did it in a different way, with a checkbox going down, you'd still end up with no on circulation, right? So your end conclusion would still be no. So I just think maybe for the for helping you all, and we certainly get it, it is different, and and I have to think, staff has really been working on this, because we've heard from both of you for the last several years that you really don't like the current findings process, and you also don't like the number of them. So if we're working on trying to simplify, it's in part us thinking we've done what we've heard from you, but I do think giving you some time, look at it, and then we can schedule some time with the ZDRB for you to have some more in-depth conversation on the concepts at the staff level, same for the council, and then we can come back and and look at what it is. Because really, I think, as we move forward, and and Michael, you asked a good question, where is the detail in 18? Well, a whole lot of what's the rest of the agenda is actually going to be the detail that becomes the adjustment to the municipal code, Chapter 18, in terms of the design criteria. And I think you're spot on, which is, you look at those things, then you come in and make a smaller set of findings. Does that sound like a reasonably good game plan? Because it still lets us, I think, move forward with the topics that need to be addressed on the design side, but we wanted you to make sure that you understand how it comes back to findings, because at the end of the day, the findings are the end result of your body's action, and it's based on the stuff that we're going to be talking about.
I'm, yeah, Stephen, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify, on that point, Steve, the the findings will be a response that we apply to, like, zoning, I'm sorry, design review standards that are different from the different areas of town. So Old Town has its set of design standards, and the findings that we're relating back to this is whether or not a a particular proposal meets those standards. And so the findings are left generic because it's the granular level that we're dealing with in the design standards.
If you were, actually, if you go to page 24, you'll notice that for both the Gateway Overlake District and the Old Town Historic District, they are proposing district-specific findings in addition for that very consideration.
Right, but there also may be design standards that are different from one district to another that would be found as having been met or not met.
Correct. That's what you would use, actually, Stephen, to make that finding.
So I think that the proposal, at least for the way that my brain works, makes a lot of sense, because it it distills it down, but we still have the ability to look at individual design standards in a case-by-case situation.
I think one of the most obvious examples to this, in my opinion anyway, is the gravel non-sidewalks in Old Town versus the sidewalks in all of the other residential neighborhoods. For example, that if there is a project that was going to build, well, let's say, the church property, if that develops into housing, we would be applying the standards of a regular residential neighborhood that has sidewalks, not the Old Town standards that allow non-sidewalks to continue and just have all have the gravel shoulders that are both combination parking and and non-sidewalk. That might be an example of where there are two very distinct areas of town that we are preserving as those styles, and then we have to have different findings slash criteria.
Well, the finding almost remains consistent.
It could.
Because it's in the granular granular level at the design standards, and whether or not it's been met for the design standards for that particular district is resulting in a finding that says, yes, it is, or it is not.
But that that's where I think we get to keeping them broad for the findings and then narrow them down. If you did get too specific at the top level, then you don't have the options at the lower levels where that's where your decision-making is.
Agreed.
So with the broad categories, we can, we have to refer back to the zoning district and the design guidelines for each of those separate districts, and that the catch-all finding that Bob mentioned is that it complies with Title 17 and 18. We're looking at all those different standards, and we're not calling out all the specific standards per district. Perhaps that's what we were doing, we had the 88 additional findings, but it's trying to simplify them more but call out the broader categories.
Right. Lynn?
Yes. I I just need a clarification on something. The existing is called criteria. Is the existing really the current findings?
Bob?
Essentially, yes.
Yes.
Okay. I was curious about that, because they're saying criteria, and it is criteria, but then we're replacing it with findings, so, thank you.
I think that's why you underlined it, right?
Yes.
Yeah, did you have more that you wanted to present tonight?
I was just going to say, on the next slide, the mayor just mentioned that, again, these are two existing, these are not necessarily proposed, these are two existing findings in the code based upon, oh, actually, these are not, these are from the general plan, I'm sorry. So again, these are just being brought forward to say, you know, do you want to incorporate anything like this in findings? I would say as a caveat, it is not necessary to repeat language from the general plan into your findings in the zoning code, because in making decisions, you will have to make findings on both, general plan compliance and zoning compliance. So while we're bringing these up as, you know, this is language in the general plan, you aren't compelled, and you won't miss out on these if you do not incorporate these as findings in the zoning code.
So a question for Gary, since a lot of this is about defensibility, does it help to have that duplicity in the findings, even if it isn't necessary?
It can be. And the reason for that is having them spelled out in the zoning code requires and makes it more likely that the ZDRB and the council is going to make that finding when making the decision. You're absolutely right, every decision has to comply and be consistent with the general plan. So presumably, when staff is reviewing all of these applications, there's a two-step process, you're reviewing not only what the Title 17 and 18 requires, but also what the general plan requires, and there is a catch-all provision that says, you must be consistent with the general plan. Spelling it out in the zoning code separately makes it a little more obvious and upfront, and perhaps makes it less likely that it'll be missed as being inconsistent with the general plan.
So again, we distilled these two design criteria from the the general plan that you could consider incorporating as findings.
Michael?
Well, it was really a question for staff. I mean, I I know that in the staff reports you provide, you go through the guidelines and the findings. So, I mean, obviously, having lived with them for a while, I mean, are these proposed findings or the language ones that you've vetted and are happy with, or is that is that also part of the process, given that you're major stakeholders in this?
I'll let Sandra answer first.
I think that the categories that we've presented for the design review findings are clearer because they address the site characteristics, the retention of trees and views, it addresses parking and circulation, all these major categories that are somehow lost by framing most of the design guidelines in the negative, that they don't cause all these detriments. So I think it's a different way of looking at findings, and it's a little clearer. I have to say, I also like the way that St. Helena and Sausalito have really clear categories that are easy to apply. They track in a similar way as to what this town has tried to achieve with findings, and that's an option, too. So we've grouped them into categories like site design, architecture, et cetera, versus individual ones. And I think if we're able, that's the type of feedback we'd like to hear tonight so that we can revise and really try to make them specific to the concerns of Yountville while retaining this broader level and this level of subjectivity that can be used when we're making them.
Okay, maybe we can just jump ahead then and deal with the last topic, which is the master development permit findings. Again, very conceptually, there are currently 14 of those findings. They principally address sort of the same issues that are addressed in the use permit and design review. They're just the design issues and the use issues. And so since most applications here in Yountville require a master development permit in addition to a use permit, in addition to design review, essentially, you're making three sets of findings, which in most cases are really duplicative, but not quite the same. So staff has to draft, you know, multiple findings, sort of dealing with some of the same issues. So, next slide. The suggestion is maybe try to divvy those up and make the findings more related to your specific, unique process. So you have both a preliminary and a final stage. At the preliminary stage, at that point, you will not have made decisions on the use permit and design review. So those are out there in the future. But if we could take those pieces of the use permit and design review findings that you will be adopting, at the conceptual stage, as much information as you have to actually adopt findings about, you know, the conceptual use, the conceptual design, we think that would make sense, because it gives the applicant, the public, a sense of what direction you may ultimately go in. And then for the final stage, you will be adopting the formal use permit and design review findings. So at that point, we think it's kind of superfluous to adopt separate master development permit findings. So our suggestion is, at the final stage, you just make a finding that you're, you know, referring to the design review and use permit findings that you were simultaneously making. So again, you're not ending up with with multiple sets of findings. So that's the concept there.
So it looks like you're not only proposing fewer, but less detailed.
Yes. Because again, particularly at the preliminary stage, you only have so much information. You really can't dig very deep in terms of of the details, figuring out privacy and, you know, necessarily the the traffic impacts, those sorts of things. You won't know that at that point.
Mix of building types, environmental hazards, those are the details you say that will be coming out through the process.
Right.
Any other thoughts about that last section? That's where Molar.
I have a, listening to some of the ZDRB discussion about all this information and turnover and sometimes new members, and then having information where you're referring to Title 18 and you're not, or you're referring to another section. You know, I I think that's actually asking a lot, you know, because everybody's reading their packet, there's a lot of information in there, and then to like, you know, pencils down and go look up Title 18 and go through all that, too. I I think that maybe a hyperlink could go in the reports to that, so it would have easy access. If you're saying you need to make a findings related to Title 18, then I would hyperlink that. But to to really think that somebody's going to then, you know, put it down, go to their computer, or, you know, wherever they go to, and look that up, and then go back to this document, it's just, it adds a lot of extra work that I think, quite frankly, won't get done.
Well, I think as as the town manager points out, that really is staff's job. I mean, the staff report that you get for a project, I'm sure articulates, you know, how it complies with the zoning regulations in in 17 and 18 and how it doesn't. And so then the staff will take that information from from that they've provided in writing in the staff report, and then distill that into the findings to, you know, show how it complies or it doesn't comply with with your municipal code.
So in terms of content on the proposed master development plan findings, it feels a little light on environmental impacts.
And that because at that conceptual stage, you will not have your environmental review document done.
Understood, but if it's in this, and I'd like to hear your opinion about it, in the preliminary stage, if it is listed as a priority that certain environmental characteristics are either strongly encouraged or or even prohibited, that would probably help in that early stage for someone to know, well, they need energy efficiency, or they need drought-tolerant landscaping, or they need things like that, without necessarily calling out those features. But if there is a finding that, we we have a finding, number three, preserving significant trees, natural features, and public view corridors, we are not calling out environmentally sustainable or sensitive characteristics. I don't know exactly how to craft that, but it's something that if we agree is a priority, that that might be something to add in there.
Okay.
Other thoughts from anyone?
No, I I agree, and just even more specifically, I think there's been a lot of confusion at both boards, I'm just going to say, because I was confused, about public view corridors. They're not, it's not obvious what those really are. They definitely, we learn, I think we all learned in the general plan, what a view corridor is and what it isn't. You know, it's not a line of sight necessarily. So I've always thought that if you're going to fix anything, that the view corridor, I think, requires some, a better definition or a better term.
I also think to that point, I want to remind everybody, right now, you're dealing with a broad, and then you're going to go into the details when you get into. And to your point, Councilmember Molar, the def, you saw it up there, the definition of view corridor, how it looks, those are the details that need to be working through, just like on the three-story. We talked about the three-story zone, but we have to fine tune what is the definition of community benefit, and how does one apply and get that. So those are the types of things that we're going to be working on through the next that we'll define, so that when either body is looking at, you know, does it impact a view corridor, we've got to do a better job of explaining what it is or isn't. And it, there may be some people that still don't like where we end up with what a view corridor is or isn't, but that is the next level that you guys are going to be working on for the next eight to nine months, is bringing out that detail on those various topics.
So in the interest of time, since we do have our regular meeting in 12 minutes, if there are any last minute or or so that you want to wrap up, or if there are any final questions, but we do need to trans, kind of transition the the room, we obviously have next steps to worry about, so, Bob, if you wanted to.
I would just say, you know, thank you for your initial input. I think, you know, we were here, the direction that you're coming from, which is just what we needed, to work with staff further. And I'd agree with with the the town manager, you know, we're starting this process by sort of jumping into the deep end at the end of the process, at your at your approval decision, without going through all of the regulatory stuff that, you know, and the design criteria that lead up to that. So little esoteric beginning, but again, I think, you know, staff pointed out that this is very important, that the existing findings really could use some work in adoption of those sooner rather than later. So that's why we're bringing them forward at this outset. So we'll be happy to take these comments, work with staff, and when we come back to you individually, we'll have some different approaches.
And I have our next ad hoc committee meeting on Monday, October 21. I think that is the next one. I would encourage all of us to look in more detail, get a sense of what you like, don't like, and and make sure that you get that to staff and or the vice mayor and myself, so we can consider all of that information when we sit down next.
So Sandra, will we be reviewing this in detail at our next meeting, or how did you want to proceed on the design part of it?
We have to decide how to bring this back to you. We're hoping to get feedback to bring you a final set of findings at the meeting where it's adopted. We're moving now to a workshop on October 8th with the ZDRB, where we'll have our architect, and we'll work through some of the change areas. So we've already attempted to schedule that with different subject matter, and we're, so we'll have to see how this fits in. It obviously has to fit back into the process.
Okay.
So we'll keep you posted, basically.
And this is probably a little out of order, and not intending to have the last word on this, but just two comments and observations. And it sort of speaks to some of the questions I had earlier, was, I, you know, I appreciated the categorization that you provided as context in terms of some of the
the categorization that you provided as context in terms of some of the, the design findings. And I thought about why that was, and it was clarified that, you know, there's a spectrum. We could literally have one line in the findings, say, does it adhere to the, the standards in general plan, and be done, right? That's not really helpful. And I realized, why isn't that helpful? It's because there's a, I think the most important audience for this that we haven't talked about are the people who are actually submitting the designs for the review. And I'm, what I'm gathering from this is that they're actually the most important constituents of this, right? Because if we, if we just said, look, it, you know, it doesn't, you know, adhere to the, the guidelines, there you go, they're going to say, well, what am I supposed to do with that, right? We want to foster an environment where people want to improve the town, want to develop things, want to make their contribution. And when something is rejected, it has to be really clear why, and we've done our homework to make it really easy for them to digest. It's that bridging between providing every single detail and bombarding them with it versus giving them something that they can work with. So that, to me, if there was one element or a spirit we want to use, is how is, how is somebody from the town going to receive this in a way that they may not appreciate, or they may not like, but they'll at least appreciate that we, we made it easy for them? So anyway, that was maybe an underlying philosophy that could work in how we actually put language forward on this.
Thank you. Any other very brief final thoughts? Are we good for now? So staff's going to be working with all of us on next steps, meetings, and all that. And like I said, please feel free to offer up to staff and us for the ad hoc. Thank you all for being here and an extra night, it's much appreciated. Well, good, we finally got you together.
Email, if we're emailing, what?
I would go to staff. Definitely go to.
What emails do we use to get to you? Are you?
They could get it all to us. We want to avoid any serial meetings. So thank you all. I do need to adjourn technically, I'll, I'll entertain a motion from Councilmember Moller that we adjourn to our meeting at 6 o'clock today. Councilmember Dornbeck, her second. All in favor? Aye? Okay, thank you.